I'd like to call this no longer need of the adult population to order. But I'm glad to know that.
We thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for the beauty of life itself. We ask your blessing come to mind to those who share this meeting tonight and as we make decisions, may they do those things that will be pleasing in our sight and make our county a better place and wish to live for Christ's sake. Amen.
You have received the last of your previous rules and the prayers. I feel no additional corrections. Good morning.
Good morning.
Questions? Only in favor, let me know whether it was that I, I, or opposed, carrying on, the Minnesota group. At this time, we're scheduled to walk into Minnesota.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, good evening to everybody who see tonight. I would like to invite Sheriff Cleaterson to the podium. He'd like to share with you.
Good evening. Great, very good to see you guys. I just want to share with you, we have some great things. We have a review here of the other magistrate, Captain Watson, who showed you guys some great things. So, who won't be before you, okay? Captain Watson. Lieutenant Stokes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Sheriff, for, and thank you, Commissioner, for allowing us this opportunity to present to you the progress of the Edgecombe County Detention Center. We have some package for you if it's okay to pass them out to you. Sheriff, so make sure you read them. Okay. I am grateful for the opportunity to serve this great county. I've been a resident of this county for over fifty years. And so, let me start by sharing with you what we feel is some major accomplishments, improvement that we have made in the detention center. And one is, we have purchased seven televisions for parts for the inmates. Inmates are now able to use tablets at no cost to the county. With these tablets, they can take educational courses. With this, we have accomplished behavior management and positive change by providing education and life skills and training to those offenders of ours. They learn and earn credits and spend those credits on rewards and recognition. Right now, we have over two thousand eight for courses that have been completed as of November the first. More than fifty courses can be taken and utilizing these tablets that they have access to. Also, we have installed eight kiosk machines in each, one in each part, that allows inmates access to the law library, whether state or federal, pre- program, commissary, they're able to submit sit call requests and also read orientation on these kiosks. We also place storage bins in the parts so that inmates will have storage space for their personal item. We have installed basketball rows in the main recreation area and give them some form of activity. We have purchased board games and volleyball for the female population while they are on their rip yard. We also painted in the hallways of the administration section of the detention center, utilizing the trustees to do that. We've now evaluated our food service operation to help reduce the cost. Right now, it appears that it's costing us about twenty-two thousand dollars a month to provide meals for two hundred inmates. At first glance, I feel that is, that costs is too much. And in the last couple, three weeks, I've been able to look at ways to reduce that cost and we're continuously working on that. Also, we have rap programs that inmates are able to participate in, daddy programs. These rap programs help them to be able to, to deal with life situations and a lot of those situations have caused them to become incarcerated. And so, we had the opportunity to go and be a part of one of the graduation completion ceremonies. And it was a breathtaking experience to listen to them as they shared some takeaways from those programs that will assist them in making better decisions when they re-enter into society. So, we feel real good about that program and some other programs that we are providing to them to assist them. We have also purchased reusable cups and bowls to replace, to be used in the kitchen area. We were throwing away money into the trash cans by using styrofoam cups and bowls. And so, we feel that's going to be a great cost saving to the county as well. We will see the impact of that probably in the next year or so. We also monitoring our ordering of dry goods and meat goods to help reduce the cost. As we have stated earlier, we're still looking at that. And still continue to be able to provide the proper necessary calorie intake for the offenders as well. We're also in the process of replacing mattresses for those inmates. But right now, we have flat mattress with no pillows and we didn't have pillows for them. So, we're able to replace, buy better mattresses at low cost. And so, we're going to probably do that at a stage so we won't have such a big impact. And right now, we have a problem with them tearing up the mattresses and folding them up trying to make pillows and bigger mattresses. And so, we feel like that's going to be a great cost saving for us as well. It's bad to see an inmate in medical and need his head raised up and we don't have a pillow to put on his head. And so, we pray that we have a very compassionate sheriff who also sees the need to provide a pillow. Major concerns that we feel that should be, need to be addressed, and we are addressing those concerns, is maintenance. We have a lot of maintenance issues. We had a jail inspection from the federal inspector back in, I got there July, so right after I got there, he came through. He was very displeased with the maintenance, a lot of light bulbs that are out, a lot of food tray doors missing from the segregation area. He was not happy. So, in so many words, he said that if this continued, there's a possibility we could lose our federal inmates, which would cost us millions of dollars. And we certainly don't want to do that. So, I immediately took corrective action to take care of something that's why we initiated some painting of the administration hall. We initiated some painting in the segregation area and removed some of the hinges that he noticed that could possibly be a safe area. And now, we just got to get those doors replaced. It's very difficult to do that. Our maintenance staff are very busy with other things that are going on with the county builders, so we're working closely with them to try and get these fixed. But we had a status of maintenance detention officer to help us to, to get some of those items corrected. We're doing good at one point until he decided to leave and with us being short staff, man, it's hard to find somebody to do that. So, we're going to be looking at ways where we can find some assistance in getting some of those maintenance issues fixed. When they come back for re-inspection, I don't want him to find what he found the first time he was getting it because that would not be a good look. And so, we're working on getting those items fixed. The other major concern we feel we have is staffing. We, right now, we are ten position down. And we've been like that for a while now, probably about nine to ten months, not at ten, but close to ten. And the difficult, we have difficulty in hiring and retaining quality staff due to the low pay and the stressful environment that they're in. They're constantly having to deal with inmates who are not the best inmates, who are not driven in on a Sunday school bus. And so, they get cursed at, get things thrown at them, they get just contrary to everything positive that we, we try to do for them. And so, the staff, we're doing all we can to try to boost morale of our staff, to show them that we appreciate them. We've, we've working on the appreciation month, week for them inmate. And I'm hoping that you all will be able to attend to show them how much you appreciate them. We're going to do something for them the whole week. And breakfast one day, lunch one day, and supper one day. And then, on a Saturday, we're going to do a finality with some awards. We want to do it at Indian Lake. Lieutenant Stokes is working on that right now as we speak. And so, we just want to just show them how much we appreciate them, that we, we realize that they are under pressure, that they're overworked and underpaid. We, we understand that. And we're going to do our part to try to boost morale. But in saying all of that, we, we do have some positive though. And with the average monthly reimbursement that we receive from Paytail Communications, U.S. Marshal Service, and Kimball's commissary, and the statewide misdemeanor compact program, we confinement program, we generate probably about a hundred and five thousand dollars a month that we submit back to the county. If you tie that time twelve months, Evan, and monthly, maybe a little more, depending on what, how much inmates spend in the commissary, how much they stay on the phone. So, that figure can go up monthly and yearly. And so, we're looking at over a million dollars a year that we reimburse back to the county and to the budget. And so, we're hoping and, and as my fellow federal inspector said, that with the money they're paying us, we ought to be able to fix the place up. And, you know, I got to agree with him. And so, again, we're doing what we can to do that. So, you, you have in your package some copy of programs that inmates are participating You also have a copy of the September month bill for Kimball State misdemeanor confinement program and the federal marshal. Also, you have a directory of a number of programs, courses that inmates could participate in on the tablets. And also, you have a copy of some certificates that we have issued to the inmates. They look forward to getting those certificates so that they can take with them and present them to their probation officer, present them to the judges, show them that they are trying to do something to make a positive change in their life. And so, Lieutenant Stokes, she does a good job of making sure they get those certificates and that they can take with them as they re-enter into society. So, the detention center is constantly evaluating what we do. We believe that it's dumbfounded to continue to do the same old thing and expect new results. So, we're constantly evaluating what we do, how can we operate more effective at a low cost to save the county some money and also to be a good steward with that we have been charged with. Lieutenant Stokes, if there's anything that I missed that you would like to add, if you have any views of service with detention center.
Anything that I can think of at this time? I would like to say though, over the years that I've been there, which is, I'm working on twenty-nine years now, we've had a lot of good detention officers come through that we have lost because of the low salary that we are being paid. But, you know, it's sometimes not all about money, but it's about the job itself, but pay will help. Hey, you got to have the heart to do what we do. And for the things that we go through, I can understand why they're walking out as they are. Because if you can read into some of the reports that we have submitted, the stuff that we have thrown on us on a daily basis, the stuff that we have to walk in on a daily basis, I'd like you to come out to walk a day in our shoes and you can understand more of what we go through on a daily basis.
And, you know, as a matter of fact, we had to counsel with the staff today to call some things that she shouldn't probably have said. But yeah, you know, even an inmate probably should not have said what she said, but I, as I told you, we're professional. And even when they become unprofessional, unethical, we still have to remind the faculty that I'm dealing with them. But, you know, I realize it's due to the stress that they, sometimes they say things that they shouldn't say, do things that shouldn't do. Overall, we are very appreciative of the opportunity to work for this great county and protect the public as we do what we do for the elements. We now give back to Sheriff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for what you did.
I have a question.
What?
Is it, can, may we ask a question?
Yes, please, please.
So, sir, you mentioned that you average about two hundred inmates on hand?
Yes, two hundred, hundred and eighty.
And what is the, what is full capacity? What, what would that be?
At the detention center on Anacon Road, the capacity out there is two hundred and fifty-five. If we was up to staff to be able to move back to the D.O.A. neck, that's a capacity of eighty-three.
So, three hundred and thirty between the two facilities?
Yes, sir.
And you also made a comment, a hundred and five thousand dollars a month for the income?
Yes.
From an average of two hundred inmates?
Yes.
I was doing the math, it's about, they're spending sixteen, seventeen dollars a day or income equivalent, it's not them spending money. You're saying that we're receiving monies from other enterprises?
Yes, we're receiving money from the federal marshal for housing inmates for them. Also, we receive the money from the state for housing misdemeanor inmates who have less than one year of time that's been since they've been.
So, if we're generating a hundred and five thousand dollars a month in income, what does it cost enough a month to operate the jail?
We haven't looked at that figure closely yet, but I'm working on that. And, and, you know, we really need to move some inmates to the annex building, especially our juvenile.
Annex over the courthouse?
Yes, uh-huh. But we don't have the staff to do that.
Nobody's in the annex now?
Nobody's in the annex.
No, so we just do it for court purposes only, and that's during the daytime.
If you had additional staff, could you, could you get more federal inmates and increase the income stream?
And that's what we're hoping to do. Yes, sir. Once we get more staff, fuller staff, we're hoping to increase our federal population that would generate more revenue.
If it's less than six months, the county pays, is that correct? If, I mean, if they get, when does the state kick in paying us for inmates? At what time?
Once the judge has sent them to prison.
Regardless to prison, what about to state, to county jail? Who pays for that? We do?
We do.
Well, county residents. So, we take some from other counties when they don't have space and then that county pays.
So, if it's less than how much time that the county, that the inmate, that you get, when the judge sends, what, nine a day, that's hours, that's county time?
Yes.
Of the two hundred on, on hand on average, how many are county inmates?
Ooh.
Just a rough guess.
A hundred and eighty.
How many?
So, ninety percent of our inmates are county inmates and only ten percent are federal. Has that always been the average, ten percent federal?
No, sir, it's not.
How high have you seen the average?
For federal inmates?
Mm-hmm.
A hundred and twenty.
So, we've gone from fifty percent to ten percent federal inmates?
Pretty much so.
Okay.
It's not, it's just, I think when we originally got in this, we were one of the only counties around that was really doing this. And a lot of the other counties had just gotten into housing federal inmates. So, give us an exact number of how many federal inmates we have now.
Right at this moment, we have thirty-seven.
It's way down.
Yes, sir.
We got a couple of questions too.
Go ahead.
The Paytail Communications, this is for one month?
Yes, sir.
Ten thousand dollars. That's based on time spent on the phone?
Yes.
And this is something they, they pony up every month with whatever they can, time spent on the phone?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And then, the other one from Kimball's, I guess that's pretty commissary. What, what they purchase, I'm just curious?
From Deora to edible items, drinks, whatever we, we desire for them to have, sneakers that they can purchase, get all those, those kind of items. On the chips.
It's just like going into a garage to store without leaving the detention center.
You probably already told me this, what's the maximum capacity of Anacon Road if it were full?
Two hundred and fifty-five.
That's the total, maximum.
Yes.
Another question?
Yes, sir.
It's got to be from the board, not from the.
I want to say thank you. Thank you for all the work you do. It's, it's gotten to be tough, I know. So, thank you. And note that I'm sure that we would want to do all we can.
Because I have no objection that they want to handle it, but it's normally from the board that we have a match question from.
Yeah, I'll answer you.
Sure. No, we, let's move on. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, once again. And I, I just think you guys are owed that, what we've been trying to accomplish here at Sheriff's Office. There's some great things happening down at the Sheriff's Office and Detention Center. And, and I won't be before you guys long, it's, it's, it's going to be a long twenty-four hours for me. But to whom much is given, much is required, that's been the position I put in with these great faces that are behind me. We at the Edgecombe Sheriff's Office are going through some things that the Johnson County Sheriff's Office in Tennessee alluded to a few years back. We never close, we work days, we work nights, we work weekends, we work holidays, not matter what type of weather. We're constantly on call, having to leave from our homes and other jobs to assist other deputies in dealing with dangerous situations, arrests, and investigations. All with zero compensation, all I can give them is call time. One of the great things that happened to me two or three months ago was when another sheriff said, anything that Edgecombe County needs, you guys got it. Because when the bell tolls out, we go. And that's the kind of team that we're building out here at Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office. We do this because we love our county. We do this for the families we're raising here along with everybody's families in this room. Having a pay here has become a great detriment to the Sheriff's Office. We know this, we get it. And our ability to hire professional qualified staff. What I'm trying to build here at the Edgecombe Sheriff's Office is qualified, professional people. And it's hard to do when the salaries are the way they are. Just as important as our ability to retain personnel, you know, and we get that. This has resulted in a huge struggle to continue to provide professional law enforcement to serve our citizens of Edgecombe County. Failure to pay our sheriff's staff a decent comparable salary has resulted in the loss of experienced staff. See it all the time. I joke with my guys all the time because I am a training machine. Pride myself on that across the state. Taxpayer money has been lost by way of outfitting costs and training. It's a benefit other agencies and communities have gained at our expense. Some of the times, I train these guys for free. No other people come in and train but me and a few other guys. We train for free because of cost. But that getting the product across the state is coming out of Edgecombe County like no other. Take pride in that. We have a lot of great industry coming ahead at the Edgecombe County. I'm grateful, I'm thankful, but at the same time, I am fearful. I'm scared as a sheriff. Because I know this, we gain industry, I lose a lot of great employees. So, I'm scared. The pay here for Edgecombe County deputy sheriff and the staff and the rest of the staff compared to surrounding counties is heartbreaking. It's hard to sleep at night sometimes. Even on my way here, a retired sergeant asks, where are you going? I'm going down to speak at the commission, with the commissioners. And he says some things that I will dare not repeat because I want to stay professional. But he said, after forty-six years, you're going to get the same results. And as a leader, I believe in something different, different group of results. We have worked extremely hard to build a professional agency here and partner with other law enforcement agencies. I pride myself on this with my team. We call for nobody else. Man, I love it. We call for nobody, but everybody calls for us. Am I right, brothers and sisters?
Yes, sir.
We call for, we don't call for anyone else. But they call for us all the time. So, we partner with everybody. Good citizens throughout the county, we're statewide. Spread the brand of Edgecombe County statewide, not just Edgecombe County. We spread it statewide. There's a level of balance that has been seen over our country, and I'm telling you guys, really, really tough. This has led to my team being involved in numerous physical altercations, which has sent staff to the hospital due to being injured and exposed to blood, and it's been heart, heart, heart wrenching, while attempting to arrest out of control suspects and inmates. These suspects are increasingly engaged with staff in physical fights and deadly situations, deadly force situations. This is almost daily or weekly basis. We are lucky that none of us have been killed, and we pray that this is not what it takes for people in Edgecombe County to wake up. It's tougher than what people think. Now, it should not matter whether you live at this level, as to the level of professional law enforcement that we all receive. It should not matter. It matters to me. Professional and a quality law enforcement officer, that's the product. Staff at this point are just waiting to be promoted for more money to support their families. This is what I'm engaged in seeing, and I dare not promote any of them just to get them more money. I've seen this across our county. We have promoted people that are not qualified to do the job because they're looking for more money. Just because they don't want to move to neighboring county to get extra money because that's what they're offering, where they're offering. Just because we're a rural county doesn't mean our citizens and our families don't deserve the same professional law enforcement in their communities. None of us got in this profession to get rich, and people should get, get paid appropriately for the job they do and the risk they take. My staff have been forced to take second and third jobs. Over ninety-five percent of our H.C. work second jobs. Working all day and night and then coming in, putting on a bulletproof vest, uniform, gun, and do their part in helping out our neighbors and protecting our citizens. We want this county and our community to thrive. We have this motto at the Edgecombe Sheriff's Office, if a man or woman sees something that's broken, we fix it. We don't meet, we don't have time for discussion, we fix it right then. This is our motto at the Edgecombe Sheriff's Office. We want lower crime. We want good and safer neighborhoods, good and safer schools, we want more for our kids. We want the same thing that everybody in this room wants. Remember this as I close. We don't have a panic button. The Edgecombe County Sheriff's Office, we are the panic button. Because anybody you're going to call right now in Edgecombe County, it's going to be We are the folks that recall in a time of need and distress. I love these guys because we just don't protect and serve. We serve and protect. There is a difference. We see and deal with unbelievable, the evil, the unmentionable. And unfortunately, these guys don't get a chance to tell me no because it's unacceptable. They can't tell me I'm not going to do that. I don't feel like it today because we serve and protect. We are bound by oath to uphold the law and try to help people at no matter the cost. So, as Edgecombe County Sheriff, two of my daily goals is to positive impact Edgecombe County and enhance the quality of life for all citizens here in this county. That's it. So, yeah, I'm asking for pay increases for all of my staff so they can make a comparable salary to everybody else in law enforcement. Because I'm telling you, they're calling for us, we're not calling for them. So, they see something in us. And I love it. It's nothing more than just get hazard duty paid, the fights in the jail, the spit on in the eyes, can't touch your wives, can't touch your children. We've gone through this. This will keep qualified homegrown deputies and staff here, saving the county money in the long term. The deputy and staff which are still here doing outstanding job, I love them. They give themselves continuous and sacrifice everything for Edgecombe County. Our community police is sacking the nun across the state. We serve, then protect. We must be able to maintain the best people possible for such a demanding and dangerous job. And yes, I am advocating for my staff to get pay raises, I get it. This county has a pay scale to go by for each person that works the county. And for the last eighteen months, I've sat and I watched. And I've been working towards and bolstering my opinion on this very thing. I've stated it time after time. I'm not looking for a pay increase for myself. Don't do anything for me as the sheriff, but do everything for my hundred and forty-three employees. It's unselfishness. However, I do believe in this. I do believe and look for what is due for myself financially. I do believe in that. Give me what is due. For the last eighteen months, I myself, I, I may not agree with the general statute of the one fifty-three A ninety-two, may not agree with that. And that's the stat, the statute that provides a salary for the newly elected sheriff being paid no less than the salary of the department sheriff. But I do believe in this, for it is only right to give every man his due. I do believe in that. And we have worked hard, we've proven ourselves as a unit and as a team, and I stand with them any day of the week as their leader. So, on behalf of the Edgecombe Sheriff's Office, we thank those who support us, and we want to, want to thank you for your continued. And we want to thank you for your continued support in helping us provide a professional law enforcement here in Edgecombe County. Wassey, whether I win or lose tomorrow, and I know that was a thought process, whether I win or lose, the main focus should be taken care of by Edgecombe County. Thank you guys so much.
Any final questions for Sheriff?
I have a question about the Sheriff's Department budget. The Sheriff's Department has budgeted certain funds each year. And do we in that budget dictate which ones go to salaries? And do we dictate how much to each position or is it left up to the Sheriff's Department to figure out what funds are dictated to salaries and how much per position?
So in, in the budget that you approve for, you know, across the county including Sheriff's Department, his budget has line items that are assigned a value. And so that's what he is bound by. Now, he has the opportunity, if he needs to move money from one budget item to another, whatever that might be or for whatever reason. In fact, probably in the budget amendments tonight, there might be a few as there are from other departments. He can request those changes from one line item to another.
Is a line item an individual employee within the Sheriff's Department or does it say labor to jail salaries? So the sheriff and Sheriff's Department has the opportunity to move money within the organization?
Right. Do we have pay classifications?
Exactly.
Pay classifications of the individual positions. I think maybe it's what the sheriff is referring to in terms of, I guess the pay classification is of a deputy's twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. I guess the sheriff has the, the right, if the money is there in terms of whatever increases he wants to individual slots, if the money is in a register.
So is the request to change the pay classification maybe raise those ranges?
That would help.
It's not as much as more money? Because you could, I guess, find money within the overall budget to pay people more.
That, that would help as right now what I'm dealing with, if all those positions were filled, starting deputies, those positions are locked at thirty thousand dollars, forty here or something. Those pay classifications will, will help. But if I'm, and I'm aware about four or five positions of deputy watching being filled, just as an example. If those positions are filled, those positions have to come in right now with the, with the existing salaries that I have at thirty thousand, forty.
Is that a start as hell?
Yes, sir.
What is the total dollar amount that you would like to see as an increase to bring it up to where you'd like?
What, starting deputy?
No, overall, what the total amount of money that you're asking the county to, to additionally fund to get your staff to where you'd like to see a dollar amount? I mean, you ask for more, but we don't know what you're asking for.
I, I, I like that, but I can go ahead and say off the top of my head, I did some figures a while back. A half a million dollars would help. I mean, you start, you're looking at salaries mad compared to, I go back to one of my captains sitting in here right now. He has a brother that works at, works at a local police department for me. And my captain here right now, this man, forty officers, and he's ten thousand dollars or less. And I'm requiring a lot, a lot more from him, so a half a million dollars is a great start. The issue that we're having is, and I know I can control the finances and the budget and all of this stuff, but the issues, I don't have the money. That is, that is, that is the issue to move some things around because I've got some guys that deserve it right now that are running circles around any agency in this county. But I can't move, I can't, I mean, because I'm looking to field this agency. And another thing that we're looking at too, we're working on safer schools. I'm thinking, I'm thinking five years ahead of time. Right now, I have fourteen schools in Edgecombe County. I have to staff those fourteen schools and it's coming. I have to staff those, that's fourteen more positions. So we started talking about moving money, right, this money that I haven't, I haven't even received yet. So I have to staff fourteen new positions upcoming and it's coming. We would never have thought that school shootings would have hit North Carolina, but two hit in almost two days. So we're pushing for safer schools and we're talking about funding. Guys, we're looking at probably perhaps, looking at hiring maybe eighteen more deputies within the next three years. So we have to start, start some forward, thank you.
I think the school board coming out.
Actually, that's, that's a good point. Here's one of the things we're working on right now because, one of the things that, because it's so hot and heavy. The school system and, the school system had a hundred thousand dollar grant and we met with Mr. Evans on this. Had a hundred thousand dollar grant, they matched, I think fifty thousand, so a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And we met several, now I wanted to bring five retired deputies off because it's all I could afford at this time. Five retired deputies to cover middle schools and the elementary schools combination. But right now, we got it off the ground, one can be, can, can afford to handle three of them. So still finances is an issue, is an issue. When we sat down to talk and the school board and the superintendent want to move forward with these three because school safety is big, big, big. At the end of the day, we should have had school resource off of these schools ten years ago. So, so, so it's a hurry up and catch up. Because I can tell you, they're not gonna look at Chief Webb, they're not gonna look at Chief Williams that are even rocking out there. They're not gonna look at the chief in Pine Towns. They're gonna come to the sheriff and say, "Why weren't these schools protected?" And I have fourteen under my watch, three at school, seventeen schools. So they're gonna come to me, that was a fourteen man position that we had to move forward thinking about man.
And those are, and this involves, as you said, is that the sheriff dealing with the manager in terms of what we can afford in our budget. I don't think there's any opposition to what you want to do from this board. Ours is the same as yours, and this is how do we finance it? And if, and I think this is a conversation that Mr. Evans, your discussion with Mr. Evans and if there's funding, and this board is not opposed to, we believe that our, all of our employees in this county are underpaid. In fact, we know that because we listen across that line. And it's our intent, as I have stated to you, we will do anything to have all of the employees in this county. And in understanding your position as a sheriff of this county and how you feel about your department, that's the right way to do it.
Okay, sir.
I understand the manager and it's fine, there's nothing that the board won't do. There's nothing that we won't do if he can find. And the manager has a greater responsibility in terms of, of, of how, you are probably, you are one of our only elected department heads. One of them, which means you, you do this different, okay? You do this different. But I also like to respond to one thing you said. We do think differently in terms of what our attorney has told us. I can't quote that number of that statute, the statute that you referenced, okay? I can't quote the number of it, but we think we have done right about that, okay? So we differ in terms of, of your thinking. And we go by what our attorney say is, is the statutory department. And what the sheriff is speaking on, I'll speak to that. It's whenever there is, whenever a position becomes vacant. If it's an elected position, I think we got two, there'll be the sheriff and the the counties look at what that salary is, and at that time, they can reduce the starting pay. If we reduced the starting pay of the sheriffs, that position, there was no sheriff. There was no sheriff at that time. If there, if there had been, if the sheriff had not resigned, we could not have reduced that, we could not have reduced that pay. The sheriff resigned, which created a vacancy. And in creating that vacancy, this board decided that the next sheriff would not start at the existing pay that sheriff might have. That's what the, and we did it with the registered D's position also the last time that became vacant. That's what, that's what they did in Nash County. That's what they failed to do in Wilson County and tried to do it when the sheriff, once the sheriff files, or once the sheriff file, you cannot reduce those. That's our understanding, and that's stated there.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to give you, the public, since we will be on air, I want to give the public also some understanding of, of what happened with that. We didn't know who the sheriff was gonna be, okay? And it didn't make any difference at that time. And it's, it's not that, we do want to see you paid, we do believe that you have done an extra job, okay? And I personally hope that you win tomorrow, okay? And I'm not speaking for this board, I'm speaking for the chairman, me, okay? So, but I, I say, and I'm speaking for me, if the board has a difference. We would do anything that can be worked out if the finances are there. If that can be worked out with the manager, but I, I, we, we just don't say that we will raise this and we don't know where the money is coming from.
I understand.
Nor, nor do we know the exact amount being requested. We're hearing a lot and we need to do it, we know, and we all know we need to do it, but we don't have a dollar figure.
But guess what, I get back with you on that commission.
I'm chair of the finance committee, I need to know the dollar figure.
I, I, I don't think, and I think that's the, go ahead, brother.
If I'm not mistaken, out of all that's been said, I think I heard, whether it was spoken in words or not, that the difficulty in maintaining the qualified staff you're looking for has become an issue because you are more a training agency than you are a working agency. Because with these many vacancies, we got some issues that need to be taken care of now. And I hope you don't think you're sitting here with no concern about the well-being and, you know, and having a little law enforcement experience. I know that that pay has a lot to do with the quality of work that is being done. And I hope that we can work something out that will make a difference so that you won't have to ever wonder how long you're gonna keep a law. Because a trained and experienced law enforcement officer is one of the best gifts that can be used in a county or town. And I heard you loud and clear, you didn't say it in those words, but you said, if these officers are not paid, I don't know how long they'll stay.
Yes.
And, 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 and everybody wants to get paid. I'm, I'm, I'm here to tell you, money may not be everything, but we're here for whatever's in second place. Money is important.
And, and, and if I can make myself clear, I, I believe in an increase for all Edgecombe County employees. But one thing I pride myself on with our guys, we protect the borders of Edgecombe County. And, and I always took pride in that at the end of the day. When all this failed, we protect the borders on the, on the, on the Nash side, we protect them on the Pete side, we protect them on the Halifax side. And, and at the end of the day, it's us that's standing on the borders of Edgecombe County twenty-four, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. So that's my stance on that. I believe in everybody, but I believe in them first. So that's my stance.
And I think, I think we have the best working environment of anywhere in the state.
Amen.
And that's why they're there.
Amen.
That's why they're there. We do need to pay, but the work environment that we create in this county helps keep those, those that are here.
Yes, sir.
And this is home, been all my, all my life, and we will do what we can.
Yes, sir.
Anybody?
I think our sheriff and his finance person needs to be, well, the manager and his finance person, I really believe they really need a, a sit down.
And, and as we look at the, and the sheriff mentioned, they do. And as we look at our budget, and as we look at our projections in terms of, for revenue will be coming in, okay? And that's, and, and I've always said to the sheriff, work with, that's what I've served, all of the sheriffs since I've been here. If the manager can say we can do it, okay, or say we can do this, and, and those things come to, I think this board looks at all of that favor. We have to have it in the budget.
Also that we need to look at, you know, that pay study we have, that scale that we have.
Eight years ago?
Yeah. We, we gotta start looking at the lowest, we gotta find somewhere in the middle. And I think that we spent all that money to get that study done, I think we need to really start finding ways to work on it.
And the pay, I, I don't mind raising the pay classifications. To me, but we gotta have the money to put in, even now, they're not to the top. Okay, okay. They're not, the, the, the classification right now, if we add money to put them higher in their pay ranges, the pay range, I, I don't, raising the pay range doesn't give them no money, okay? It doesn't give, put in money in their pocket, not now. I don't mind raising the classification because it does give the sheriff the ability to, to recruit and negotiate within those classifications, you know, if, and that's something that, that can be done without any money. But, and that's, and that's a discussion to have with Mr. Evans. Anything else?
I said, I, I just want to thank you guys for your time.
I thank, I thank you for your presentation.
Yes, just, just understanding, we're fighting hard for Edgecombe County. Me and Mr. Evans, man, we, we talk all the time, but he will be sending me first thing Monday sometime.
And, and I understand your presentation, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you guys for your time, we appreciate what you guys do, and we're gonna keep fighting. And I just want you guys to understand, my job as a leader and team captain is, is to speak on my guy's behalf. So thank you guys so much, guys.
Thank you for what you say.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Kevin. That's what matters. You want to do, I appreciate it.
At this time. At this time, we have public petition, is there anybody to speak? At this time, public petition, is there anybody to come and speak? Hearing none?
I'm coming.
Let the sheriff go ahead.
All right. I'm Kamose Danson, P.O. Box thirteen nine one Pine Town, physical address one two seven Midway Lane, Tarver, North Carolina. I didn't come to speak to this subject, but since the community was included in the conversation, I would just like to add, I understand the presentation, I understand you all's response. However, some of the things that were said such as what other counties have done, what you can do and what you cannot do as far as lowering the cost, the pay for, the, the oncoming sheriff because you didn't have incoming sheriff because you didn't have one at the time, I understand that. But it don't make it necessarily that you had to do it from what I understood, and I couldn't be wrong, I stand to be corrected. If the money was there for the other sheriffs, I don't understand how it is a problem with the incoming sheriff. But that's, you know, y'all, y'all handle that. I've been following sheriff in the county since the late eighties when I got involved in, in political, in politics. Feel good about being a part of the Edgecombe County Democratic Party, to be a part of the process of, upon not only this sheriff, but the, the, the past sheriff. And I feel good about what kind of representation we have had. But also, I'm very active in the community and I'm out and about, and I see what the deputies are doing. And also, I know some that work in the jails, I've been to the jails and won't be going down there because it might, I'm already crazy, I might end up in there. So I don't want to go down there, so I try to stay away from there. But I, I just think that it's not the, the, the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office, get that right, that should be, I don't think all the burden should be on them. I think you all is over the sheriff's office, so I think it's more so of the county trying to find funding to pay those guys. So I think that that's, you know, where it need to come from. I understand the sheriff often need to do their job. But I also hear about other departments, well, you know, that's, that's good, but other departments need to be standing right here where I'm standing. The sheriff is here tonight speaking on his behalf, so I think to me, for me, and working on my job for thirty-one years and having to advocate on my job and do things, I think it's not fair to even mention what other folk ought to be doing, they ought to be here. You know, he don't need to be here advocating for other departments, they need to advocate on their own. So I just think that with these guys' lives being on the line and their jobs not compared to what the other folk are doing, because their jobs are not on the line, so to speak. I mean, I'm quite sure service in other departments still get a little feedback from people out of the community. But the sheriff's office does a great job, like you said, they're twenty-four hours, I'm out, and I'm saying I'm going to work tonight, you need to come to this meeting. I'm working a different shift this week. And I see them out, I see them doing good things, I see them changing tires, I see them doing a lot of good things. And I would love to see them, you know, whatever you can to, to help them, you know, with their pay. Because it's neat, these guys are putting their lives on the line, you know, if they lose their life and the family got burden on them. I just don't think we can compare them to other departments. Regarded D's, familiar with that, was a part of that process, having, uh, 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 while we're getting appointed. I just think that we need to look at I just think that we need to look at being an example of other counties. We all are examples because they're doing things, um, following when the flood came, how they went down, they put their lives on the line, get down and get flo, um, surrounded by water. I just think we need to, and, and, and we've been, you know, they've been coming before the board for years. So I just think, you know, you all need to do whatever you can. And I know you will, to compensate these guys for putting their lives on the line. And, and I'm familiar with Wilson County, because when, uh, Kevin, uh, uh, was, was, uh, when he was, uh, elected over there, I was also over there, so I, I, I understand the county things because I'm not limited to Hecum County. So I just want y'all to do whatever you can to make sure that our officers get what they need to get, thank you.
Mr. Buller, you have a question, do you want to raise your hand?
My question was, um, it's gonna be directed to the sheriff. Princeville is short on man, man, manpower, and I know that one time, um, the prisoners would come and help and assist, and I was wondering if there was a court, you know, if it's possible of re-establishing that type of communication or service.
Well, I, I guess it's good I didn't post, it's not necessary to put it here. Okay, that question on. Is there, is there anybody else to speak at public petition? I'll just make one comment on what Mr. Danson said. If the board of commissioners look at, uh, our department here, this is a team, how many departments we got?
Eighteen.
It takes eighteen departments for this county, and without one department, this county does not function.
Understood.
It's a, it's a team, man.
Understood.
Uh, is there anybody to speak at public petition? Hearing none, moving on to other business. Consideration of approval of bledges amendment, uh, is there anything that brings our attention?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Is there motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. B, consideration of calling for public hearing on December third, two thousand eighteen, for the closing of College Road in La Mosha.
Moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, public hearing is called for. Consideration of remittance for Princeville fifty-three acre development, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the General Assembly appropriated funds for Hurricane Matthew recovery in the Disaster Recovery Act of two thousand sixteen. From that funding, two million six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars is earmarked for the town of Princeville for the development of the fifty-three acre tract the town recently purchased and annexed. North Carolina Department of Commerce, which is managing those D R A sixteen funds, has asked that we can receive those funds and implement the development project for the town. Both you and the Princeville Town Board approved resolutions agreeing to that arrangement at your meeting in September. Attached to your considerations, the grant agreement committing those funds for the project. I recommend that you accept this grant award and approve the accompanying project ordinance and budget amendment.
Yes, ma'am, next one, I see that the mayor, the mayor and some of his commissioner are here. Anything you need, Sheriff Mayor?
No, sir, and thank you for your assistance. And I would also like to introduce our new town manager, if you have not met her yet, please stand, Ms. Harris. Uh, and forgive us for not coming before you earlier. Thank you, Commissioner Harris, for reminding me.
Is there motion to approve, and he's asking for approval, so. Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that is approved. Consideration of approval of resolution related to the Corning project, uh, Mr. Evans?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just briefly point out, you've seen this resolution before. This is for infrastructure funds to accommodate the Corning, uh, project. North Carolina Department of Commerce did make a change to that resolution. Uh, they backed out the thirty-eight, uh, full-time contract positions to only hold them to the one hundred and eleven full-time permanent positions. So that's the only change in the agreement from what you've seen before, and I recommend that you approve.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Question? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, is approved. Consideration of water recreation mini-grants, you have them in your package, is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Question?
Question.
Go right ahead.
Notice that the points scored, I see one with sixty and another with sixty. One received and one didn't, is there?
And, and the, I guess the difference between those two, the committee felt, the one that did not receive funds last year and the other one is a new one.
Any other questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, it is approved. Consideration of authorizing Farmhouse Office to issue the necessary permits to S and W Productions, L L C, to have fireworks display on December twenty ninth, two thousand eighteen, for Curtis Gritton, thirty, so Dylan Lane, Tarver, is there a motion? You got it in your package?
No, moved.
Second? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, is approved. G, consideration of approval of two thousand nineteen Harvett's case, your copy is in your package, is recommended to approve, is there a motion?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, is approved. H, consideration of acceptance of grant of Walter Princeville H M G P acquisition, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we received the first grant agreement under FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, or H M G P, for the town of Princeville. This agreement covers the mitigation of flooding through the acquisition of twenty-two properties located within the corporate limits of Princeville. The grant total is four million three hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. I recommend that the board accepts this grant agreement by adopting the enclosed grant project ordinance and budget amendment.
Motion?
So moved.
Second? Question?
Question.
Go right ahead.
Okay, I looked at the property locations, so have we been in contact with these families or these properties to make sure they're still on the way for acquisition of that?
Yes, ma'am, in fact, oftentimes, before we get a chance to call them, they call us to check up on where we are. But our case managers, uh, keep running notes on sort of the situation or status of the folks that are in this program. And so, you know, for digits states, so there'll probably be residents that will hear about this tonight and want to know what happens next. Uh, we already have a, an appraiser under contract that started on the county's acquisitions for the unincorporated areas, so we will assign these appraisals to that firm, so they will start working down that list. They will get a call from that appraiser to schedule a, a time for them to come out and do that first. So there's still a little bit of wait, but, uh, we're, we're, that'll be the next step, is to have the House approve.
Any more questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, is approved. Consideration of approval of infrastructure contract amendment, Mr. Evans?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, um, we have a construction project underway for sewer collection in the town's speed and surrounding areas. This project is funded in part by Community Development Block Rent for Infrastructure Funds. We received notice that our grant, uh, contract needs to be amended per federal requirement. Those changes are described in the attached letter. And just as a note, it's not just ours, but similar contracts that they have with other counties across the state. Uh, this amendment poses no issue for us in implementing this project, which is near completion. Therefore, I recommend that you approve the enclosed grant and contract amendment.
Motion? Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, is approved. Consideration of revised pick plan, include amended I T position. Go right ahead.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, so, um, over the last year, we have implemented strategic improvements in our information technology department to be more efficient and to better protect our network. Part of that includes evaluating the functions of the positions in I T. Our I T director recommends upgrades in both the titles and job descriptions for the three positions in that department to better reflect the work that they are already doing. Considering we have an announced retirement in that office, for which we will soon need to post that upcoming vacancy, now is a good time to make this change. The proposed change includes changing the Information Technology Director to Chief Information Officer, which is at a grade twenty-three. The Systems Administrator to Technical Support Analyst, which is at a grade sixteen. And the Network Systems Administrator to Senior Technical Support Analyst, which is at a grade seventeen. These new titles and descriptions will be more consistent with those currently used across the I T industry. Also, this does not change the pay grade for those positions, nor the salaries for the staff in them. I recommend that you approve the aforementioned changes.
Motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, is approved. Appointments, uh, Ms. Colonel Collins, I would suggest recommend to fill a vacant and willing to serve, is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, she is appointed. After listening, her leash is further given, approved, anything that you need to discuss, Mr. Evans?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, happy to answer the question, the chair.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, they are approved. Department reports for review, you have them in your package, anything that you need to discuss, Mr. Evans?
Happy to elaborate on any of those, I would like to, in light of the hurricane recovery update, like to introduce you to our new disaster recovery director, Ms. LaShania Richardson, please stand. LaShania's not been with us yet a month, but she's off to a great start, and so she is, her office is out at our recovery center, and our case manager is reporting her, and we very happy to have her onboard.
You want to tell us something, Marsha?
I'm originally from Nashville, and I'm happy to be here, serving in Hecum County, thank you.
Any other, any of these other reports, anything?
No, sir.
Any questions from the board on any of these reports? Go right ahead.
I noticed on the bid list, there's four people, apparently, there's been no contact either.
Have had contact but have not signed their agreement yet.
Do we know why, who was sitting right on the front?
Uh, I can't remember exactly where they are, but, um, we're pressing, you know, because, um, they have, I think all of those are in, in the area, they have until next April to move, but the longer that they wait, the more difficult it is for them to find another spot, whether they're gonna rent something or buy something, so. Ms. Fidman's reaching out to them on regular basis.
I guess that's make sure we do what we need to do, so they won't be, be on the time frame?
Yes, sir.
And about me and everyone in prison?
What can be done for them?
Take care of them, never have them want.
They made friends about him, yeah, man.
They want some money.
I'll let Ms. Fidman know, she needs some assistance.
I, I had a question about that.
Go ahead.
So we, uh, there's a total of seventy-nine cases, and we got seventy-two contracts signed and four not signed, that's seventy-six. So why is there a difference between seventy-nine and seventy-six?
Let's see, um, seven is actually, would be one of those of the seventy-nine, it's technically seventy-eight. One of the seventy-nine was a tenant of the former part owner. So there was no contract or an agreement for us to sign, so that's one there. So of the seventy-eight, I don't know, there may be a miscalculation.
Or that, or maybe one person had two units. I, I just did not, did math in that, uh.
What about Manny that had, he had a, he was actually a driver, he drove a bumblebee lot.
That's another one, there's a, a gentleman who was renting a lot that has a, an R B.
Okay.
And so there is no relocation assistance to provide with that, so that would be another agreement, so that's two.
All right, thank you, I was just questioning.
Any other questions, I'll answer, I'll just thank anything on the manager's report. And, uh, commission, commissioner's report, there's a next up, delegate for, my, for session of county commission legislative goals conference.
That would air.
Second?
Second.
Questions, all in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, she is, is there anything, at this time to come from commissioners, any commissioners?
Oh, did we look at the Farm City Breakfast?
Oh, I do want to point that out, yes, thank you, the Farm City Breakfast is December sixth at seven thirty, eight AM, hope that all of you can.
Anything else, come out of the room.
I had a discussion with someone, Mr. Evans, about the situation we're in again with Bill and Inspector. He's got it covered as best he can, and, and there's nothing we can really do, but he wants to stay on that for the next few years, it'll be proved. It's kind of the same situation with, maybe with the sheriff's department. Well, it could be an issue, he's got a lot of people doing what he needs to do, but I hope we can get somebody back in there. And people.
It's my number one complaint, I guess, with constituents.
Any other comments?
All right, now, are you advertising that?
Yes, we have both the Bill and Inspector one and the Bill and Inspector two posted now. We've got some fairly decent applicants submitted within the last week or two. Uh, so right now, just in case everybody's not aware, our full-time inspector did leave us about, I don't know, three, four weeks ago. She took a job closer to his home in Winterbowl. And, um, we already had a, a part-time, uh, under contract inspector of latter part of the week. Since then, we've got another part-time contracted inspector who's giving us two days at the beginning of the week. So it does pose some, uh, scheduling challenges, uh, we're trying to make sure we fill that gap as quick as we can.
Anything else on the commissioner's report? Hearing none, or trying to report?
Yes, sir.
You have something, brother, you have? Nothing, something? At this time, uh, there's a closed session, uh, scheduled for economic development and personnel, is there a motion to go ahead?
So moved.
Question? All in favor, let it be known by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed, at this time, ladies and gentlemen, we're going into closed session. Thank you for coming.